We'll call to order the Louisville Town Council meeting for September of 2014. I'm Dan Pugh, the Mayor of Louisville. We welcome all that are in the audience tonight to tonight's meeting. We hope that certainly you scouts, as you're here, I'm sure, are working off requirements for merit badges and hope that this evening will be, I won't say entertaining, but I'll say informational to you as you'll get what you need from that aspect. Now, the pledge of allegiance today or this evening is being led by Boy Scout Troop 7-9 Teams sponsored by Sherin of United Methodist Church. Also, we have a member of Troops 7 to 49 from Art Lord United Methodist Church. So we'll ask the scouts if you would come forward.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Scouts, thank you for being with us. It's our custom to, as we call the role of our council and introduce our staff, that we do so by introducing each of the council members. Tonight, immediate right is our Mayor Pro Tem Sandra Maugh, followed by Councilman Ed Smith and Councilman Jeff Singer. And to my left is Councilman Robert Green, Councilman Mike Horn, and Councilman Dr. Ken Sadler. We do have our town staff with us tonight. There's our Town Manager, Mr. Hank Perkins, our Town Attorney, Mr. Beau Powell, our Town Clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker, and Ms. Kathy Bruce is our Assistant Town Manager and our Finance Director. Also, we have Marty Myers, our Town Planner, who's in the audience. And then on the camera is Ms. Lynn Hall, who will be filming tonight's, or recording tonight's session for later playback on the government channel six. We certainly welcome those Louisville citizens that are watching and participating in that matter. And we have our, in the audience also, we have a representative from the press, Mrs. Cruz, who thank you for being with us tonight also. With that, we have the next item is the adoption of our agenda for tonight's business. If you came in and you didn't pick up a copy of the agenda, there are copies on the table there at the rear of the chambers, so please feel free to do that and follow along. Counsel, I think the agenda, as much as we had approved at our briefing session, if there are any questions or concerns on tonight's agenda?
We would like your judgment.
Say. All in favor, please say aye. Unopposed, the lack of. Okay, we do have the agenda that is adopted. And we'll ask our manager to lead us through the consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of four items. First is Resolution 2014047 for the acceptance and approval of the monthly financials for July 2014. Second is the approval of council briefing and action minutes for August 7, 2014. Next is the approval of council meeting minutes from August 14, 2014. And lastly, the approval of council close session minutes from August 14, 2014.
Counsel, are there any questions of the manager on any of the items that are on the consent agenda? No, pleasure.
Pledge of approval.
Say. All in favor, please say aye. Unopposed, the lack of. Okay. The consent agenda passes, and we'll go to the next item.
Okay, the next item would be introductions, presentations, and proclamations, and there are none for this evening.
We do have a little change, I should mention this earlier, but the scouts have requested that we have a picture made with the council. And so I think it'd be appropriate to take at this point in our agenda and do that in case that they are not staying for the entire meeting. So, uh, how should we do it? Go now to the next item of business, which is our public forum. This is a first of two opportunities we have at each of our council meetings for anyone in the public, one that's in the audience tonight that might wish to address council on any issue. And what we ask is that you come forward, if you haven't already signed up. I don't see anyone that's signed up in advance. But we ask that you come forward to the podium, that you speak into the microphone, that you state your name and your address, and we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This is a time that we hear from you. We don't interchange in discussion or argument. We're asking you to let us know what's on your mind, and it may be something concerning tonight's meeting, or it may be something that is not even on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time?
Good evening. I'm Mary Gaines. I live at 7270 Land Drive in Louisville. And I'm here on behalf of the Louisville Historical Society and the Nissen House Group. Our group includes active people, Hobie Kaywood, Susan Linker, Mary Kay Brown, Mary Alice Warren, the Halls, the Lees, and of course, the whole group of other people who work with us. I'm here to say thank you publicly for what went on at last, last month's meeting. We did not do that, and I have thought about it, and I thought, well, we did thank everyone individually, I think, but I do want to say publicly, thank you to you, the mayor, and the members of the town council, and of course, the Special Projects Committee who made the recommendation for the grant funds that we will be receiving. Let's see, we had Chairman Green and Dr. Sadler and Jeff Singer on the committee. So, what we are, oh, and I don't want to forget the Ken staff, Hank Perkins, Kathy Bruce, Marty Myers, George Hauser, Joyce, and Beau Hoff, we have had a party there also.
I did.
Oh, okay. But I do appreciate and do want to say thank you to everyone for the funds, obviously, but for helping us arrive at a workable situation to deal with that. We are very excited to get started on the project, and it will enable the public to see some activity. It's going to be on the outside and some big changes there, so we're really excited to get started with that. In preparation for beginning the work, we have already met with the underground locators and dener about the work. We've put a sign on the house to let people know that we're going to be doing things, and we're going to put two little signs, one on either side of Lucy Lane where all the mothers and fathers drive up to the school, so they'll kind of know what is going on. And today, I spoke with Ms. Chaplin, the principal at Louisville Elementary, to let her know that we were going to be having some things going on there. It's a small grading company, won't be a lot of trucks. Vulcan will be bringing in the stone, and Matthews has one or two trucks that will be used to bring in the field dirt. On Monday, provided the weather cooperates, the contractor will have the front porch taken off, which is in preparation for the grading, and the debris will be hauled away by the grading contractor then. And the next day, again, depending on the weather, the grading will start. So we're moving forward, and big changes are coming. And I do want, again, to say how much we appreciate what the town and the council and the staff and the help that has been given to us. We are very grateful for that and very excited to be moving on with the Nissen House.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'd also would appreciate from time to time, a progress recorded.
We would.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Hearing, or having no one else to participate, would also mention that we have forums at the rear also, that you can submit written comments if you'd like to use that matter. Yes, sir?
Would you be interested in, like, interject in the middle, like, ask if you're putting in our own personal thing or, uh, you know, pay?
Uh, no, not, we don't do that. If you have something on your mind that you want to address the council with right now, you may do so. It's fine. Okay, thank you.
Feel free to jump in anytime if that's what's on your mind.
Thank you.
You hear what the governor works, so.
Yeah.
That's a good example of a lesson of how government works. Thanks for asking a question.
Or doesn't work. Or doesn't. Okay, we will close the public forum and go on to item five, which is new business.
Okay. Item five, new business A is important for 2014006 for the pointing of students for our Student Leadership Committee. I'm on that, at Bruce Sanders.
We have three new appointments, Lawrence Chikon, Matthew Bullard, and Christian Brady-Maxi will be coming to the Student Leadership Meetings, and that will bring us up to a total of 18 students.
Okay. Do we formally do this on the order? Okay. We have these three individuals wishing to join the Student Leadership Committee via appointment order 2014006. Pleasure of council.
Motion to approve.
Say. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That order is approved, and we welcome those three new members. Forward to getting to know.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 2014049. This is a resolution for the acceptance of the Louisville Downtown Design Guidelines.
Okay. We had a presentation by our Town Planner in our briefing session this last Thursday night, and this is work that is for information purposes to the, to our citizens. This is work that's been going on for quite some time, I could say, and it is developing design guidelines specifically that will be utilized as we expand and move toward developing and growing in some of our downtown core area. And I'd say kudos go out to the planning board and certainly to Mr. Myers for his part in this. I think that, I think I will speak to council that this is spot on what we were looking for, and we appreciate all the hard work and effort that's gone into it, and it's something that'll be utilized for as far out as we can project probably. We will accept this by Resolution 2014049. Have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Action.
Say. Any further discussion or comments to council? All in favor, please say aye. Unopposed, the lack of. Okay, that resolution passes, accepting the Louisville Downtown Design Guidelines. Thank you again, Marty. Next item?
Okay, the next section is unfinished business, and there is none for consideration this evening. It moves us into Section 7, Administrative Reports. Under Administrative Reports, we have A, upcoming events at Shaffer Square and Hound Holidays. This weekend, actually, it starts this evening, there is a play production of Once Upon a Mattress. It is a rain date makeup for a date that we missed last Saturday, so that is going on this evening. Then next, we have, starting Friday, tomorrow, Saturday, and then Sunday, we have the final three productions of Once Upon a Mattress scheduled at Shaffer Square. Moving past that, we're into October. And on October 4th, we will have movie night, and that will be our next movie night in events at Shaffer Square. And then following that, on October 18th, will be our regularly scheduled date for Shalloween, and we do have a rain date for that. If Shalloween has a problem on the 18th, the rain date is the 25th.
Any questions of the manager concerning any of the events that are scheduled by the town?
All right. Moving next is to B approvals at the council briefing. These are items that were handled last week. We met last week on Thursday in a conference room upstairs. This is material that was handled at that meeting and approved. We took care of Resolution 2014045, amending Chapter 16, Article 2, policies by adding the stained glass playhouse to the town's facility exemption list. Next on the list for last week was the annexation, under the annexation request from the Estates of Assara, we adopted Resolution 2014046, directing the clerk to investigate an annexation petition. Next on the list was Resolution 2014048, approving road paving contract with Yadkin Valley Paving Incorporated, a 1-2-1 cloverleaf drive Winston-Salem for an amount not to exceed And this was for the paving and repair of Loblawy Drive, Loblawy Court, Flame Leaf Court, Yarmouth Lane, and Creshaw Drive. Lastly, we had Ordinance 2014043. This was amending budget ordinance 2014027 in an amount of $637.52 to purchase 50 recycling bins. And then lastly is Section C. We have a reminder that the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Conference will be Saturday, October 11, 2014, through Tuesday, October 14, 2014, at the Corey Convention Center at Sheraton Greenboro. That concludes that section.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council concerning any of those items that are in the preliminary report, or any of the items that were approved at the previous session? All right. That brings us into the, for the good of the order, and this will be the second opportunity for the public to make comments to the council. The rules are the same as earlier stated. We ask that you come forward to the microphone, to the podium, and the microphone, speak into it, stating clearly your name and your address, and then limit your comments to three minutes. This is going to be a rather short meeting tonight, so if you have, if there's something that you'd like to address at this point in time, please feel free to do so. Okay? And as before, we have forums to make written comments on, so those are available also. So we'll close the public comment section of item eight and go to council comments. And we've got one, I guess this is a notice, that there will be members of council that will be meeting at 2:00 PM on Sunday, September 21 of 2014 at our town hall location. This is to meet the requirements for our ethics training that we have to go through as council members. So, and that is a requirement that's from the state statutes. I think we've got at least four members that are going to attend that. Okay. Another thing, I would just like to make notice that our own Ms. Joyce Walker has been recognized by the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks, and this recognition is by being appointed to their program and education committee and to their committee that does mentoring, which is, we share our services, or WSOS, I guess it is. So, Joyce, you make us look good. We thank you for that. We're pleased to see that others recognize your talents and just as we do. So congratulations for that appointment, or those appointments, against two appointments. Okay? Is there anything from council that you have comments or concerns for tonight's session?
Just a quick question. I think at our briefing, we talked about a couple of things that we would kind of have to report on this week. One was the kind of more formal plan or time schedule for the communication plan for our bridge closing. Kind of give partners a point on that. The second, I think we were going to test our survey at the play, is that correct? I remember if I come out.
Yes.
I'm kind of anxious to hear.
The first on it, I did meet this week with the Fire Chief and Chris Davenport, and we went over the emergency response plan. And as a result of that, we had some correspondence with Matthew Jones of the NCDOT to coordinate their information supplied to the Fire Chief and the Sheriff's Department so that we could lay our hands on a specific date and time to facilitate a plan for emergency response. And then past that, we've been going over information in-house on how we're going to plan to approach the newsletter on the next time it comes out.
And various other ways of communication.
That's exactly right.
Yes.
Okay. I did test the survey instrument last week, did find a particular question of concern on that. I plan to do the same thing this weekend on Friday and Saturday to see if what I think may be an issue tests out and holds on. I don't think I touched enough people when I did it last weekend. I want to test it a few more times to see.
Right, sir. Is that a concern that can be corrected, I hope?
Yes, it's actually, Councilman Horn, it was a good idea. I mean, the suggestion that he had to do this did yield an eye-opening revelation potentially for me, that I think, given as close as we are to the subject matter, we probably were too close to it to recognize for what it was, but I just do, I do want to get some test subjects again and see if it holds. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else, Mike? Sharon, anyone else? Martin?
I just wanted, and I know we've talked about this a lot over time, but I just, I guess, I'll call it, the old man's out walking early in the mornings on Shallowen Road. I don't know if it's just my perception, but we seem to have a lot of folks that are in a hurry on that road, and I'm out there anywhere between 5:30 and 7 o'clock in the morning. I only want to make a note, maybe we could talk to our police officers to take a look at that, because I tell you, a lot of folks out walking, you've got school buses coming in and out, and for me, it's something I'll be maybe look into a little bit closer.
I've gotten calls this week also about the speed, actually. I take that's what you're referring to.
Yes, correctly. I'm talking specifically on Shallowen Road.
It's funny, I was approached this in the past, too.
I guess we do need to pay attention to this, for sure. And I know there's sections in, I think it's our sister city in Clemence, have actually lowered the speed limit in some sections. But it's not a success that it rolled down, but that might be something that at least we could think in our consideration. And it probably needs to be controlled a little heavier than that has been. And we do have 24/7 coverage.
Well, we have an issue between 6:00 and about 6:30. Those come out on duty, have to report downtown first, and report to the actual office downtown on Third Street at 6:00 in the morning before they can come out here. That was newly implemented a while back, so we have a lax and slow coverage right there. They have to report down there before they can come out on patrol.
I do recall the sheriff contacted us about that. You're exactly right. And they hadn't added a reason for that change of their process, so I guess it's something that we'll ask the manager and staff to give some consideration of, and maybe come back with some suggestions for our upcoming briefings. Okay? Anything else from council? I do have one other item that's directed strictly to council, is that, you know, we've got three transportation projects that are coming up for review to the local GPO and Transportation Advisory Committee for potential funding. And we, excuse me, we do need to meet, probably in a call session, to discuss the projects themselves, the changes that are probably warranted for those to meet the cost of implementation. And the same thing for what, probably prioritization, much as anything else, too. And we're hoping to do that before the meeting, hoping that it before the 18th of this month, which is the next week. The only night so far that we have available that we've helped our manager to, to give us on, is the 17th. And I know we've had a conflict with one of our committees at that point, that, I don't know if we can meet and take care of both of those items at that, I mean, both meetings at that, and one right after the other, or if, this could be a rather lengthy meeting, but then we're, well, you know, this council. I'm open for suggestions. We do have a need for this, and we need to work it out some way or another. You know, if we call for canceling of maybe the Utilities Committee, I don't know what, Mr. Singer's the chair of that, and also about Mr. Horn is on that committee. I know you're deep into your work, set work plans, and so I would hate to have the council in order to attend this meeting, but would you be receptive to a later meeting, a later start time, or an earlier start time, if we need to do that?
Back on to Mr. Jeff, my, my person is a candidate, I think, who said, want to have a copy of everything that came, so both items are proposed. I appreciate it. Jeff, do you think we can push it out? Can we start at seven? Is that, is that a major time if we?
I would think so. So you're saying your committee will meet from what time?
What time? Seven, whenever we conclude our session?
Oh, start at that time?
Start at that time, or start at six? We don't start at six, we probably, we probably pack in the essential stuff.
We start at six thirty.
Do we?
I think we could probably, we might could get our business done in two hours. We could start at five and say end at seven. That be agreeable to everyone? I know you're a drag ass, I don't, you've done that, so. You don't get to vote there. That's Wednesday, the 17th. Well, let's plan on, and of course, we have to notify the public for these open meetings requirements. But we'll plan for five to seven on Wednesday, the 17th. Yes? I'm sorry.
I think you're going to start at seven.
At seven. That's right. Agreeable to everyone?
Sure, so you want to kind of face a lot of people, with a lot of that, basically, council.
Okay. All right, I think that's all the business that we have for tonight. We do have on our agenda a closed session, which we will go at this point in time, our attorney will help us with the nomenclature for state requirements, we'll go into a closed session.
The motion would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 143, Section 318, 11A, 5, to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and/or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
So move? On the paper, is that? Okay, we will go into closed session at this time, we'll adjourn, the council will adjourn to our meeting room here to our right. I should mention to those in the audience, to our press member, that we will make, discussions we will have will not lead to any type of action being taken from the discussions tonight. It's basically an information session. Once again, thank you for coming, thank you scouts, best of luck to you in your pursuit of the merit badge, and come back, come back to visit with us again if you would, please.